I don't know if you heard about it, but he almost got hit by a car and passed.
Good evening. We're going to open our council meeting at 6:10 PM for May 13th. We're now going to do the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Biaseada. Director Lawmore.
Present.
Deputy Finance Director Von Alt.
Present.
Councilman-at-Large Elliott.
Here.
Councilwoman-at-Large Kelly.
Here.
Councilman-at-Large Costanzo.
Present.
Word one, Councilman Curriasis.
Here.
Word two, Councilman Martin.
Here.
Word three, Councilman Snitzky.
Present.
Word four, Councilman Morrow. Director of Public Service and Properties, Bryda.
Here.
Building Commissioner Grassi.
Present.
I'm going to move to excuse Mayor Biaseada and Councilman Morrow. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly, yes. Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Yes.
I'm going to move to amend this evening's agenda and waive the 24-hour rule and add ordinance number 32-2025 as item 8C on tonight's agenda. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Yes.
We're now going to go to the reading and disposal of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President. There should be an amendment to the minutes on page 21 on the motion. It's on that page, which I believe was for the PUD. It should read that on the roll call vote, the yeas were Costanzo, Elliott, Kelly, Curriasis, Morrow, and Snitzky, and Mr. Martin, he recused or abstained. So I'd like to make that amendment if I could.
Second. Roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Yes.
We have no resolutions of condemnation this evening. We now go to reports of committees, planning, zoning, economic development. Councilman Snitzky.
Yes, Mr. President. Planning, zoning, economic development will next meet on May 27th. All previous minutes should be filed with the clerk.
Thank you. Public work. Council pro temp Costanzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We last met tonight, May 13th. Meeting minutes are pending. My next meeting is Tuesday, June 10th.
Thank you. Police and safety. Councilman Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last meeting was held tonight. The minutes are on file with the clerk. Next meeting will be held on June the 10th.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, last met April 29th. Next meeting is May 27th. Rules, ordinances, and ethics. Councilman Martin.
Council President, the last meeting minutes are on file, and our next meeting is May 27th.
Thank you. Finance, civil service, and personnel, last met this evening. Minutes are pending. Next meeting is May 27th. We have no appointments or confirmations this evening.
Excuse me, Mr. President. I just want to mention that community services met this evening.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Council, council, council person.
Thank you. Community services met this evening. The minutes are pending, and our next meeting is June 10th.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
It's all right.
We have no appointments or confirmations this evening. No communications, petitions, or claims. Council open to the audience on legislation only. Hearing none. We now go to the reading of ordinances and resolutions. We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 31-2025.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of 2,800 tons of road salt, sodium chloride through the Joint Municipal Improvement Consortium, and authorizing an amount not to exceed $171,920 for said purchase during the 2025-2026 winter season.
We now go to the second reading of resolution number 2-2025.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Seven Hills through its fire department and the American Red Cross Northern Ohio Region to provide a framework for cooperation between the two organizations in conducting smoke alarm installations and fire safety education in the community.
We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 32-2025. Council pro temp Costanzo.
I move to suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance 32-2025 by title only for its first and final reading.
Curriasis, second roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Point of order. Is there an emergency?
Yes.
It needs to be declared then.
When I declare that then?
No.
No? Thank you.
No.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to sign the agreed mutual settlement agreement and release of all claims made and entered into with Specialized Construction Incorporated on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, authorizing an amount not to exceed $400,000 for said settlement and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Council pro temp Costanzo.
I move to approve the emergency clause in section five of the ordinance.
Curriasis, second roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Council pro temp Costanzo.
I move to pass ordinance 32-2025 as an emergency measure.
Curriasis, second roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Yes.
Ordinance number 32-2025 has passed. Council open to the audience for comments. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes, and there will be no discussion at the end. Just direct everything to the council and.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you very much. My name is Nino Saretti, 6841 Drexel Drive here in Seven Hills. First comment I'm going to make is, in my capacity as chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the second comment is unrelated to the first, but I just want to get both of these out. Before I share this first comment for the record, I want to explain why it's important to revisit my comments. In light of recent developments, I believe it's critical that council understand the principles that guided the ZBA's original decision and the standards we are bound to uphold. I wrote to your ZBA members, "I want to thank each of you for your unwavering commitment and principled stand in the face of the reversal of the Zambor decision. Your full-throated rejection of that appeal was not only justified, it was essential to preserving the integrity of our role and the zoning laws we are sworn to uphold. As Councilman Martin pointed out, the idea of making accommodation for toys sets in a dangerous precedent. We made our decision based on the spirit and intent of the newly written laws, and almost immediately those laws were ignored. The plans were never changed. The applicants sought to bypass the structure and intent of our code, offering no practical difficulty and no legitimate justification grounded in structured judgment. Most of the comments submitted in favor of the appeal were based purely on feeling that on the law as written, that distinction matters. We are not in place to serve sentiment. We are here to interpret and enforce the spirit of the regulations. I was particularly encouraged by the comments from council members Kelly, Martin, and Snitzky. They clearly understand the ZBA's role and reinforce the importance of applying consistent law-based standards. We will face these kinds of challenges again, but I believe we've shown tremendous courage and deep commitment to the true nature of our responsibilities. Thank you for your continued service and dedication. I just wanted to take the time to communicate my thinking on that particular case and the template that ZBA will always use in every situation. Second, and unrelated, but very important to me and the reason for me to be here this evening. Council members and city officials, last Friday, a deeply disturbing and dangerous situation unfolded at a school bus drop-off in our city. A driver in a maroon SUV blatantly ignored the bus's flashing lights and stop sign, sped through the intersection, and came within feet of hitting a child and an adult on the curb. This recklessly behavior didn't just violate traffic laws, it put lives at risk. Even more troubling, the same driver later confronted and verbally threatened the bus driver, who also reported that several vehicles failed to stop for the bus that day. This is not an isolated incident. It's part of a growing pattern of disregard for safety, especially around school bus stops. I'm asking this council and our city leadership to act decisively, possibly by increasing enforcement around bus routes, launching a public awareness campaign, and possibly exploring tools like stop-arm cameras or street surveillance at key intersections. Our children should never have to dodge danger just to get home from school. Let's not wait for tragedy to force our hand. The time to act is now. Thank you very much."
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? None. Reports from directors. Director of Finance, Van Alt.
The finance director's report's on file with the clerk of council.
Thank you. Director Lawmore.
Our report's on file with the clerk of council.
Thank you. Director of Public Service, Bryda.
Yeah, my report is on file with the clerk of council as well.
Thank you. Engineer Gerson.
Thank you. My month of report is on file with clerk of council.
Thank you. Bill and Commissioner Grassi.
Thank you. My report's on file with the clerk.
Thank you. I'm now going to move to go into executive session for imminent litigation. Do I have a second?
Costanzo, second.
Roll call.
Costanzo.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curriasis.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Snitzky.
Yes.
Directors can be excused. Director Terry, I need you in executive session. So, uh, Director Terry, I need you in executive session. Okay, we're gonna re-convene at 6:41 PM.